Fifteen?
Seven fifty, sound good.
Oh, I should record.
Recording in progress.
All right, good evening. It is Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven fifteen P. M. This is the Warren Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, W C A T, on Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. If you're gonna speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and who you're with. And stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see Joe here, so no A and Rs?
I, unless someone walks in in the next thirty seconds, no.
Okay.
None anticipated.
I don't see any A and Rs out there.
All right, so number four, Deep Roots Distillery. We're gonna have an informal discussion regarding potential business location in Warren. Step right up.
Hi, I'm Keith, one of the owners. This is my wife Erica and our other partner Tom.
Hello.
We have a small blurb to give you guys, so you can look at it. So we're interested in twelve twelve Southbridge Road, where we'd move our current location that's at five five nine Main in Sturbridge and move it there. We'd wanna put up a building so we can have production, a tasting room, so we'd sell cocktails and bottles out there and also a restaurant. So we're looking to see if you guys are open to us exploring it, or if it's a flat-out no because of the alcohol part and where it is.
Basically, right now, we're in the old mill building. I don't know if you've ever been there, but we have no outdoor area. We're looking to do more family-friendly, like harvest festivals and things like that, where you're, we're bringing in. We have a high-end chef, does all scratch farm-to-table food, and we're running out of space where we are, and we want a more inviting, open area to do what we do, because it's not just about alcohol for us.
Are you in with the extra one?
That's us, too.
Unless somebody's there.
It's hard because people are flying by on Route twenty. Our sign is about this space, and that's all the town will allow us. And we've done a lot of work inside the space, but we would like to have our own.
So, yeah, and so the big thing is before we spend money on like developing a site plan and stuff like that, we're wondering if you guys are kind of interested or open to the idea of us moving there? Or if it's, like I said, no, then, you know, that's fine also, then we need to move on.
First of all, I would ask, is it zoned for business?
Yeah, they can do rural.
There's a special permit.
With a special permit.
As long as you serve food, you couldn't have just a bar. But if you're gonna have food, you're good.
And we are also a farmer-distiller, so we have a farmer-distillery, a farmer-winery, and a farmer-brewery license, so we're technically not considered part of your quota for serving alcohol, because we're under the farmer, the ag agriculture. And we would love to have land that we can grow some of our own stuff that we use either in our food or our products, because most of our, even our alcohol, we source locally from local farms, so it's all natural as well, and our food is the same.
Is it, what, three, three and a half acres or something?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Yes.
Oh, at Southbridge Road?
Is this the one with the horses that property?
No, no.
Isn't this the one that they were looking?
You know where Martha's was?
Mycogeeers?
Down a little bit from that, and it's on the corner, and there's.
It's on the left side, right?
On the right side.
Into Warren?
Right, the house has been abandoned or whatever.
Forest, yeah, we're forest and Southbridge.
And there's an old house on.
Yeah, it's a very old house.
Yes.
Since back off the road, it's been empty a long time. The people that were here before that asked about developing that.
Cul-de-sac?
Cul-de-sac.
Oh.
It's the same lot.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, yeah. Yeah. Because someone was here a few months ago talking about, he was representing the owners and saying they were looking into possibly doing a sub-development there.
Still for sale.
So I guess they're not doing that.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, that's it, right? That's what we're looking at?
No.
That's twelve twelve Southbridge.
Oh, and there's, I think there's two parcels together. I think it's the twenty is the same owner.
Stormfield?
Yeah.
Yes.
Stormfield, okay, yeah.
So it's those two lots together.
So it would be all of that?
Yes. So we're clear somehow?
Plenty of land.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right, and we'll plant, place, and space it grow.
And now the house is on this spot here, one thirty-nine, right?
Right.
Okay, so that, you'd get rid of the house completely? So what kind of facility would you build? Is it?
Well, we want it to look like.
Something like was on the front, yeah, I mean, that's, that's just.
Right, that's your kind of design, conceptual design?
Yeah, we, what we did in the mill was we took the historic back, so we gutted the place, we pulled the brick back, we did all that stuff. Obviously, with a new structure, we'd be putting it in, but we would like to make it look farmy and, you know, homey.
Tom's a cabinet maker by trade, so he does all finished carpentry, all that finished woodwork.
All the woodworking.
Yeah, exactly, right.
All the tables, our bar, we have an American flag that's made out of oak, all of that's made by hand, so.
So rustic?
Yes.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. We don't want no modern, it just doesn't fit our, our theme, so.
I would guess you all would do very well.
That's what the hope is.
So, I mean, what would be informally?
Yeah, exactly, informally, if you guys are open to the idea of, is, like I said, the biggest thing would be the pouring permit, because it's zoned for it, but at the same time, the neighbors and stuff like that.
Right.
So you'd have to go through the selectmen for that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we hear those guys are pretty tough, so.
Are they? Sometimes.
So, I don't know, informally, are there any concerns maybe?
Yeah, exactly, that's what we're wondering, anything?
Lightest traffic, I mean, I live right up by there, so, you know, the amount of traffic that you generate.
Yeah, what do you think about traffic?
I honestly don't think, because of where it is on the corner, if we did an event, we would, we were thinking of having like two different entrance and exits, so that, you know, it would be a lot easier and wouldn't hold up any traffic.
So one on the Southbridge, one on Forest?
Probably, yeah.
Entry, entry on Southbridge and exit off Forest, so that when you get to the stop sign, you go left or right.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And there's plenty of room to have a nice parking, like right now, we struggle with parking, because the mill building does not have enough parking for how many businesses are in there, it's, it's a nightmare. That is what we do not want. We want everybody to be able to come in easily, you know, park, be able to walk in and.
It's definitely a beautiful location.
Yeah, it's a nice location.
And it looks like you guys have a pretty good plan and, you know.
We've thought about it.
Yeah, exactly, we are putting thought, and that's why we're here proactively, not just showing up, hey, we wanna do this.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is a good thing.
The neighbors are approached properly, and they may be all for it.
Yeah, well, with twenty-six acres, you're not gonna have anybody really on top of you anyways, so you have plenty of land to space out. You're not gonna be.
So that's what I, yeah, that's what I thought.
So this, all three, one forty-one, one forty, and one thirty-nine, right?
Yes, in the listing, it does say it's three parcels together.
Okay. That one, too, is that right?
One thirty-seven?
Probably.
Do you realize?
Yeah, I don't know about that, but when we reached out to the real estate agent, they said the whole thing was for sale, that he's not keeping it.
Well, I mean, the bigger it is, the more buffer you have.
Yeah, exactly, that's why it was fine with us.
Yeah, if you're housing it on one thirty-nine, and then you have all this other land separating you.
Right.
You know.
I mean, you're not gonna have a lot of neighbors. There's one house up from that.
Up here.
Yeah, up there, and that's your couple, yeah.
And I think there's one house on Forest, right?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that land runs behind a bunch of them.
Yeah.
Up there, yeah.
And we wouldn't go right to the end, because we don't wanna be a nuisance to anyone, that's not.
You wouldn't want somebody to do it to you.
No.
No, we're not open late where we are now, we close at nine, you wanna keep the same hours. The nightlife is not our thing.
Yeah.
We wanna be family-oriented, you know, nice spot for people to come out, spend time with their family outside, have a nice, you know, manicured landscape and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Warren is known for its nightlife here.
It won't be known for our nightlife.
So you do seasonal events, that type of thing?
So what kind of alcohol do you do? Is it primarily wine, beers?
What we make is hard spirits. We make vodka, gin, liqueurs.
Whiskey.
Now you're talking.
We do have a brewery and a winery license, but we contract that out to, so Bronomy Farms in Oakham does our wine, and Altra Brewing in Sturbridge does our beer.
Oh, okay.
Those, the only two things that we do not make on site, everything else we make on site.
Yeah, we're grain to glass, so we just ferment and distill all the spirits in-house.
We also make all our simple syrups, all our bitters, most of our food is scratch, so.
How big would the building be? Like, how many people would it hold, like restaurant-wise and stuff?
Forty-nine.
Yeah, exactly, because talking to the architect, because of the sprinklers, if you go over fifty, or I think it's a hundred, you trigger sprinkler laws in Massachusetts, and because there's no town water, we'd have to have like a pressurized system, which gets very expensive, so we wanna stay under that threshold.
Yeah, okay.
And.
And we're known for our small events, too, like we don't, when we're doing anything indoors, we're not doing anything huge. There's all, a huge need for, especially even like weddings, anniversary parties, things like that, that we do for a smaller party, whereas you're going to a big event, they're making you pay for, you know, like a hundred to three hundred person event when you just have fifty people, you know? So that's, we're focusing more on the small.
And if you open up some of the fields, you could probably use some tents, like tenting, which is temporary.
Best or a summer, something, yeah, then we would do that outside.
Same with if we go over five thousand square feet, we have, the sprinkler thing comes into effect again, so we have to stay under five thousand square feet.
Right, okay, all right.
There's a company that designs sprinkler systems just down Forest Road, your land would probably butt there, so.
From an off perspective, I hope we don't have.
Right down the road.
Well, you could demo there.
That's a good beta test.
Be free, be good.
There's, there's also a, a pretty popular B and B, what, is it Laurel Hill?
Laurel Ridge.
Laurel Ridge.
Which would be good, because they would kind of marry up together, they would have an attraction.
Yeah, I don't know what they do for their alcohol and stuff.
Oh, they don't.
It's, it's all B Y O B.
It's all B R O.
They're booked a year out.
Yes.
Yeah, they do a lot, yeah, they do a lot with the sale and cross in for the weddings.
Yes.
Eric does a lot of wedding stuff, but he has a couple of events during the summer, too, which may be, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we do catering.
People in Worcester.
Oh, okay.
They, because we've been to a couple of those.
Yeah.
They're very nice, they do music and catered food.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very nice, we did that.
So I don't think permit-wise is anything restricting you, other than having to do a special permit?
Yep.
Yep.
And I think the town welcomes new business.
We like to hear that.
Yeah.
I think we all like to partake a little bit in some fine spirits.
We hope so.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, you know, it'd be great to have you come to Warren and bring your business to our town, is my opinion. Now, I can't say anything for a vote, because we still have to go through the whole thing, but informally, I think you're on to something and you have a great idea.
Yep.
So you guys see, nobody has a, like, right off?
I have a question for the client, and then I'm coming for the board.
Okay.
The question is hypothetically, if you get all the thumbs up, realistically, what's your timeline?
Year and a half.
Year or two.
Yeah, a year and a half to two years. We have a two-year lease left where we are, so we wanna finish that out, just, because we don't wanna pay to start construction.
Yeah, it's gonna be a.
Well, it's gonna take you about that to get contractors lined up, clear the property permits.
So you'd be looking to open in two years?
Yeah.
Yeah, at the least, at the most.
At the most, yeah, at the most, but yeah.
Thank you. The comment I have for the board is, as a former architect and a urban planner, this is the kind of business that the town needs to get in. So I encourage the board to be very positive and, and, you know, try to open the doors to this kind of business.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so, special permits can expire after two years, so if you wanna start this now, I think we just need to be aware of that.
Yeah.
Not that, they can expire, if you haven't done anything, it'll definitely expire, but if you're doing something, then it won't, but just be aware that that's, and that's in the bylaw, so.
Okay.
You need to make major progress throughout.
Yeah.
Yeah, show some progress, eight, ten.
Substantial progress.
Once we start, it's gonna be.
Yeah, once you get money invested, you know, involved in that, yeah, we needed to go.
How far back from the road, I mean, if you drive by, is this all gonna be visible right from the road? Are you gonna have something, a buffer of some type?
There's actually, if you drive into the driveway that's there, there's beautiful trees that line it. We would love to be able to keep them, because they're nice big trees, and that, since it would only be an entrance, not an exit, we would do that, and then it would be back almost where the house is, maybe a little bit further.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we need to also get the engineers involved, because we have to per test it, and they gotta decide what set it goes, and all that stuff, so. That's gonna determine where the house goes, or the building goes.
Is signage, so coming from Sturbridge, I don't know if you guys know.
Yeah, yeah.
Is signage a huge thing in Warren, or could we have like a nice big sign with lighting on it?
I don't think we really have a sign by there.
I, I think as long as it's.
In good taste?
In good taste.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we're not putting neon.
Giant neon sign with a lady in a teacup or something like that, I think we'd be like.
There's a big Pepsi trailer, you could end up using. Do something with it.
Yeah, unlike Sturbridge, I don't think we have anything about signs. I think maybe it's just an approval by the select board, and that's it. But we don't really have, you know, like dimensions or stuff like that.
And we don't require blue lighting like in Sturbridge?
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, because we've had, we've had conditions, including signs and all their.
Yeah, like a co-part stuff, right, yeah, so that, yeah, we'd probably just condition it then, so big, you know.
That'd be in the special permit, I'm gonna work with you.
So, actually, as you're designing this, wherever the thing, could you, could you mail that to Laura, and then she can?
You wanna?
You can keep that.
Oh, okay.
I have two, you wanna second?
Fancy.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
So.
If that's our logo, that's what would be on the sign.
Can you email that to her?
That's a nice, nice logo.
Oh, thank you.
So, part of the, your site plan and everything, do a sign, design, just get it out of the way, right? Here's the building, here's the land, here's what we're planning, here's the sign.
Yes.
Get it all done at once.
Right, and we do, when we, when we approve a special permit, we usually put some sort of conditions in there, saying, you know, you have it, but here are the things that you have to do in addition to, and what those are, who knows, but, you know, just so you're aware of that.
Okay. All right, great, any other questions?
Nope.
Just when you're doing your special permit, just including when you're showing the property, just show how close the neighbors are to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're aware of that?
So I think what they will need is, you know, include, it's not as far as a building permit, but you should have a site plan, you know, some elevations, like you already started, sections, and then just so we can see how is it gonna be like.
Yeah.
That's what you want. Very close, you can go all the way around and just bring construction documents, but it may change, because we could say, oh, you know, we'd rather have you farther back, or this, or you find out that the sprinklers are too expensive, and then you have to redo the construction set, so do a, a nice presentation of it, like if you're gonna, you know, sell it, the more beautiful it looks, the better. That's why you show us here.
We have to sell to bank, too.
But we actually have almost like a checklist, it's three or four pages, and it tells you exactly what you need.
Okay.
You know, so you can literally go down it and go boom, boom, boom.
There's no wetlands in there, right?
Way down the back.
Way down the back.
But it's way too steep.
Yeah, it goes down to a pond stream.
So they're way far away from that, then?
Oh, yeah.
That's the only thing that would really kind of hold you up, is like wetlands and stuff, so.
So if you go to the website, you go to Planning Board, you go to Site Plan Document Checklist, and you can get this stuff from Laura, too, just there's a bunch of stuff, and a lot of these you, you may not need, you know? Stormwater analysis, probably not, you know, but, you know, parking, lighting, you know, stuff like that.
So it's all there for you?
Oh, great.
But again, if you have questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you ask, that's all. Okay. Sounds good.
Very exciting.
Yeah, this is good, good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. A really handy copy of the email address.
Well, great, thank you, guys.
And just so you know, this is just the building part, you still have to get your liquor license.
Well, yeah, there's plenty of plumbing, electrical, all that junk, yeah.
We just wanted to make sure you were open to a new business coming in and what was going.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys built out in Sturbridge, you can do anything.
They've run the gauntlet there, and it's.
Oh, my gosh, yes. The biggest thing was the blue lights on the buildings, that's crazy.
They require blue lights there?
The, at the Holiday Inn Express, they required blue lights on the building.
Really?
Yes.
I thought you guys had asthmaticism.
Nope, nope, they required blue lights.
All right, next, we're gonna, we are continuing, or we are starting again after continuing the public hearing for March tenth, twenty twenty-five, on special permit application for seven twenty-seven Brimfield Road LLC. We are in the selectman's meeting room. The applicant, seven twenty-seven Brimfield Road LLC, is requesting a special permit, which is number three fifteen, under section three point two eight, earth removal pursuant to section eight, the zoning bylaws to allow earth removal and crushing operations at seven twenty-seven Brimfield Road, map nine, lot eighty-one, in the rural district. All right. You're up.
I got some plans that you guys wanted to look at, so.
Yeah, okay, so we were looking for mainly sections. Sectional stuff?
I think it's okay to be on form, because it was charged.
So, and this is gonna, so this is what, every, oh, this is a foot?
What are the squares?
Or foot, or a foot, right?
I believe so, yeah. What's the legend say?
One inch to forty feet.
Yeah, but I mean, this is two twenty, this is two thirty, there's ten box.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's close.
Ten box, is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
All right, the excavation area, what, which we, the trailer office or whatever is?
Uh, when you go around the corner, there's actually no excavation until you get around the corner.
Okay.
You can see it better right down this way? Yeah.
If you, if you imagine lines going straight down, that's what this is, so the line. Now, do you really think you can build that?
Yeah, it's only five feet, four to five feet.
Doesn't we have a forty-five degree angle?
We're not touching the backside closest to the house, we're gonna like come in, I don't want the top, then we're gonna make it safe coming down off that.
This is gray, but it's too narrow, I don't know.
Well, that's not the pit, that's a burn, it's, it's separate. That wouldn't be on the face.
Well, I mean, if this were twenty feet high, it would be a problem, like five feet or so, right?
It's five by three.
Yeah.
It's every.
So it's like this fifteen feet, you have to stage it, right?
For fifteen feet in height, it has to be staged.
Yeah.
So this is gray to the point where the noise is here, if you make a line.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
And eventually, this will come down, so it'll be lower, eventually, because that's where the ground is, yeah, so that's just right now.
I wanted to protect you, because if they come and say, look, it's so loud, and we can't stand it, we go there, we hire somebody to measure, and they measure more than.
Sixty.
Whatever, sixty-five decibels, we gotta shut you down.
Right.
It's not gonna measure that, I'm sure of that. But if, if we did all, everything, now, you know, it's more like a balance, okay, you did your homework, you know, try to resolve a future problem. For how long is that gonna be?
Oh, the burn?
Yeah, how long is the burn gonna go?
Well, on that whole edge of the property, right to the.
You have the other house?
Right to the road, you know, from the bridge, right to the bridge.
Okay, so this is down a little further, is the angle, okay?
Yeah, because this is all woods from there, so.
So basically, mine are two houses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be at the property line, walk past?
Uh, it would be inside the right-of-way, that's there, that flat area that goes through.
So five feet, dirt hill?
It would be on the inside edge of that. Yeah, we're never going on the other side, as we discussed, look at that, top of that existing burn is, that's the top that runs all the way to that dry ridge.
So, is this the property line right here?
Yes, yes, and then the right one is through there, so it's on the inside of that.
Okay.
This one can't block there. We're only focusing on this side of it. Right.
Right.
We're not focusing anything, anything from the side, and the right-of-way stays the way it is.
All right, okay.
Hundred, right? Hundred, two hundred? About four hundred feet long? Well, at least, unless it's gonna keep going?
Yeah, it's gonna go from, all the way.
Where goes, where's the dry ridge on this thing?
It doesn't go the full length of the property, because.
The dry ridge is over the stream?
Right, this, this doesn't go all the way to the end. Yeah, the excavation stops there.
Okay, oh, I see.
So it doesn't go all the way.
So this is all untouched?
Yeah, untouched, yeah, and all this is untouched.
Yeah.
Because that hill's gonna stay there. And then we'll loom the burn.
Yep.
Hard pack this area when the gravel's gone, and it's gonna be a staging parking area.
All right.
And that burns, and nobody will be able to see it, like, you guys can, can just barely see the top of my excavator, and I was like fifteen feet in the air, so.
You know, you got the concept, one of the ones is a physical barrier to minimize the noise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that way, they're protected, they're not in pain for the sound, the noise. And that way, they're protected. They are not in pain for the sound, the noise. I mean, you can hear the muspite from there. You're not gonna, it's not gonna be like crickets.
Yeah, it probably comes more the other way though, because there's nothing, there's no.
We don't run all the time crushing our two pits.
Yeah. My, my point is.
Run like six weeks out of the year.
Six to eight weeks. You are doing something to mitigate, you know, to get this, you know, to prevent for that.
Yeah, we're trying to prevent it.
The intention is what it comes to be in the rest of the board on trying to protect these guys.
And no hazardous materials are gonna be stored on property, definitely not. Nothing with asbestos or anything?
Any building we tear down has asbestos, has been removed prior and we have to use that and give it to the bone inspector before we tear down any building, so that will be, it's free of asbestos.
Is it gonna be grass on top of it?
Uh, top of what?
Yes, yes, you guys, you guys know me, which type of grass you have. Well, it can be natural vegetation as long as it keeps it, so the roots hold it together.
We're gonna start it with something at least.
Yeah, we'll put something that recommended. There are some grass seed in seasons, you know. Something tall in bushes, so it absorbs the sound too. Maybe wild butterfly grass maybe or something.
That's, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, try to grow, grow sod on that hill. It's not gonna.
If you put a wildflower up there or something.
But there's all that, those piles of topsoil, so there's.
Yeah, we'll put that topsoil down and then we'll figure out what's the best.
I'll send that to you electronically too.
Hard pack, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's got her on this one too.
Yeah, this one, I, I thought it was gonna be harder.
Yeah.
It's taller, but it's good.
She's a little bit further away.
Yeah, she's further away and there's, there's a case in it, so. Yeah, the more you dig over here, the better it's gonna be for the mess. Because then the other thing I thought about it was gonna be, you're gonna have to put a wall, you know, around your crusher or something, but this is good.
Good, thank you.
So can you keep these?
Absolutely, and I'll send it to you electronically too.
All right.
Where did that go?
There's that.
All right, so I guess. Are there any other questions? So let's just say, deal with questions and then we'd close the hearing. And then, uh, we can come up with conditions and then next meeting we can vote.
You would explain it to the, uh, butters, what's going on?
Yeah, I, I will, but I just wanna like, so are we?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a good solution. A solid berm will help. It's not gonna cut one hundred percent on the noise. Like it happens with the muspite, you can hear.
Yeah.
But it's better than having it direct sight coming in.
Yeah, yeah, visually too, it's.
And visually as well, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm positive that that will help.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody else? Questions? Yeah, but, um, come up and state your name and where you live. And if you, if you wanna look at the plans, you can.
Well, I think I got.
Okay.
I'll look at it afterwards. Diane Cordak, seven seven five Brimfield Road, um, one of the houses. I've been doing some research on these machines and my concern is not only the noise, but it's the dust emissions that's gonna be coming from these machines.
I could answer that. We, we have water on site. We're gonna tap in, uh, to the existing water, put a hydrant and we have used dust control, so that's a concern of ours too.
Because that's concerning to me, because that does ruin your episode, okay.
We've been doing this a long time and dust is, is mitigated by what we use for water.
Okay, because I think if everyone sees where we're located, we're kinda like in a valley, so it's gonna come down. And of course, we're on the other side of the road, we have that hill over there. And talk about sound, I mean, I can hear my neighbors across the street having a simple conversation, you know, so, and the, um, the other thing my husband and I were talking about is the increase of strong winds. We've had some enormous winds this year.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Address the board, just so there's.
I'm sorry, okay. Um, it's the strong winds too, um, that we're having a concern about. If anyone's thought about that as well. I mean, we've had fifty, sixty mile an hour winds, um, that have come right through our backyard. And without the trees anymore, we have no protection.
Right. So if you look the berm, I guess will help with the wind.
Before that, Mr. Chairman, by looking at, yes, it will happen like, like an, an eastern, that the wind changes in that direction, but most of the time predominant, winds are going in the other direction.
Out of, out of the west.
From the west to the east, yeah.
Westy, so it's not gonna be that hard, just in, you know, those special locations where we have warm air from, from, from the south coming out. And even though your house is at the bottom, so you, if, what I'm trying to say is, if you're looking, if you're sitting in the backyard of, of your house, looking at it, the wind is gonna go in that direction. So if there's any dust, you will see it going that way. Because that's the way the wind comes in from the southeast and then most of the time the wind comes from this direction, so it goes on top of your house going that way.
But it has come the other way too.
It does, but.
Okay, like we have a canoe in our backyard that we have it on pedestals and it's not a aluminum boat canoe, it's a old fashioned canoe made out of wood. And that, one day, the wind came and took that canoe and lifted it right off the, off the thing and just floored on the ground. And so, and that came from where this machine's gonna be going. It came from that direction.
Yeah, nature can do weird things and we gotta, we have to respect nature. Sometimes it does very, you know, um, different things. My point of view is I'm trying to protect you as much as from the noise.
Right.
That's a big barrier that you're gonna have over there. You, you're barely gonna see the machine from there. It's gonna block the view to that part of the site. So even the wind will, if it comes from that direction. So I, 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 I get what you're saying about the, about that, but, you know, it could come from anywhere.
I understand, but it's just the way the setup is, is concerning to me.
And, and we understand that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you wanna see what it's gonna look like?
Uh, well, I've been watching. This is where we are.
Well, we'll show you your particular house. So this is your house, okay? Here's the road. The road is going up around like this, so here's your house, right?
Yeah.
And when you're standing at that point over here, you're gonna, the idea is that the machine is gonna be here, the noise is coming this way. And right now, they're gonna put a berm in front of it, so it blocks most of the direct noise at your house. Also the views, yeah, okay. So each square.
It's five feet.
It's five.
I mean, not one foot, sorry.
No, I can't, because the house is not two feet. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, okay.
So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So it does, it's there, but the houses, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The house is six feet. So a person is one, two, three, four, five and a half. That's a person. Yeah, okay. Okay, that changes things. Come over. So if each square is a foot, the house is at least that. That height, right? So there's something off on your scale. Because this is, this is at scale over here, but these are not foot.
I think it's probably just this, the area, not the elevation of the house. It's probably what it's. The house is at scale. The house, the, 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 it's not an elevation on the house. It's how much form it probably takes up.
How about this? Where is this point, where is this point here?
Right here.
Is that right or is it somewhere over here?
No.
Okay.
Well, you just imagine lines going down from this.
Yeah, I mean, these, these don't necess, do these line up?
What I'm saying is if it's horizontal scale, it's okay, but the vertical scale is being, you know.
As far as the house goes, it's not.
It's not the scale.
But that, for some reason, that looks like a giant person compared to.
Yeah, but that's, that's the height, five and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
That also says one inch to forty feet.
That's the end, the horizontal scale is that. So every inch is gonna be forty feet, right here. You get an inch, see that forty feet? So the house is like forty-five feet. So that's okay. It's just the height. They, this is very common.
Right to twenty-eight to two twenty-five.
Two twenty-eight is somewhere over here. Where's the twenty-eight right here?
Well, it's hard to say because this, this may be going up.
Here's the twenty-eight and the twenty-eight hits here, so that's where the two twenty-eight, which is take five, that's okay.
Right in the middle of the berm.
No, what they did is this. So I have one, two, three on the horizontal and then they have a much bigger scale. If we do this all to scale, it will look really flat.
Yeah, right, so this has been exaggerated.
It's been distorted so we can understand, okay?
Yeah.
The problem is, the house was drawn at two feet.
Yeah.
So literally, yes, you will see that.
Right on the top, yeah.
That on the top, so probably that's too short.
Can you get this any higher?
We're just using what's existing. We weren't building it up where it's flat, make it safe and then sort of let it fall down. So there was a couple of little peaks, very small, but most of it, that's height staying. Like we, yeah, when we walked.
For example, this will be one thirty-two, two thirty-two.
Right.
And the height of the house is like thirty plus eight. Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's the height of the house. It's not two feet, it's eight feet. So that's too low. Because literally, you really want like on the other car wing? On your house? Where really wanted was that if you stand out here on your deck, you don't see that. Be high enough so you don't see it. And the noise comes over here and it's kind of like away. But this is to scale, but the house is not, because if I ha, if I stand over here, one, two, three, four, five and a half, that will be a person.
And we know that hill's fourteen feet tall, right? Yeah, thirteen, twelve, fourteen feet that exist.
If you have all this land right here, why do you have to have it right here? Why can't you, not a hundred and forty-five acres, why can't you put it somewhere else, further away?
It is further away.
No, it is. This is gonna be way.
Rushing up here.
Or wherever it is, I mean.
They've already done this though, that's the thing.
That's permanent and this is gonna be just parking. We're gonna finish it up.
So what we want.
What's the elevation of that parking? The new elevation?
Two twenty-two is here. It's two twenty-five, two twenty-five, yeah. Yeah, where the driveway is, has to be the elevation. So, two twenty-two, two twenty-five in that ballpark.
You, you don't have the new existing.
It'll be right here, two twenty-eight.
No, but that's existing and you, you take this.
Right, it's gonna be probably just a little bit lower because you want it to pitch away from the road. So it's probably two twenty-seven until.
And then two twenty-two right here in the road, because the dry bridge is here, so we're, that's pretty flat. That's the elevation of this road, but we're continuing it.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, so you're.
So this point, you, you're, you're calculating is two twenty-four?
Two twenty-two on where the road, the easement is currently, out for the water to sort. That's about two twenty-two right here.
So that's the road. That's where we got in.
Right, yeah. And we're not, it, it's only gonna be like a foot over the road, so it pitches that way.
So here will be two twenty-one?
Yeah.
So at this point, we have two twenty-one, we extend that, right? Here, we look for two twenty-one, that really hits here. That's where your parking is.
Yeah, berm much taller.
That, that's why I was, the first thing I said, can you really build that? Because it looks.
Yeah.
Looks so tight, you know, looks like a wall. And having your eyes go over on top of the hill, that's, then it's not gonna do nothing because your ears are at that level.
Yeah, when we were in the backyard and looking where the berm is, you saw, that berm is stained. We're not touching the height other than shaping a couple of knots around it.
On this section, I think it was okay, but over here, you needed to go higher and it's not gonna happen. That's not existing right now. This is existing. It's not showing on the section.
Well, no, I mean technically. This is the height of it, right?
The height is okay, but it does this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's so narrow, it's all down.
Well, that, that, this part will have to be to grade. It'll have to be where the slope requirements are.
Into the parking area.
Yeah, yeah, that part will have to be slow properly.
But still, it's not high enough. If the house is eight feet, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight feet, if this is where the roof starts.
Yeah.
You know? And if, here, it needs to be a little higher, at least six feet from.
Yeah, can we, how about another foot? Would that be possible? At least in front of.
Because then you're gonna do all that work and it's not gonna block the noise because it's not tall enough.
Right.
Yeah.
We need another foot.
Okay.
What do you think? Let, let, let the, uh, abbot say something.
I'd rather have the trees back. I can't, I can't have the trees back. It makes for the trees. It would, it would, it would help with the noise because.
All this could have been a worry.
We used to listen to the equipment and we never really heard it that much because of the trees and that's why the park never took the trees down. So, and that's gone. And that, we're not gonna get that back. My concern is, um, what this is happening is it's, it's gonna affect so much. Not just gonna affect us, as, it's gonna affect the people across the street. It's gonna affect everyone because the noise down there, the sound just carries.
It's a grapple thing right now. Did that bother you with the screen equipment?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it drove my husband crazy. I mean, because he had to listen to that.
It's gonna be very similar.
But.
It's the same equipment.
And the same thing with the dust. I mean, the dust is gonna go somewhere.
But we mitigate the dust, you know.
You know, and that hurts everything. That hurts the vegetation, that hurts everything, so.
We mitigate the dust.
How about a prefab wall that you can be moving down and down and down every time you just move it down, but you block your crusher?
That's not gonna work for me. I, I mean, I'm looking at the site. It looks pretty nice the way it's set up and I'm willing to work with the berm. Right now, if I'm not in the picture, Ryan could take the berm right out. He's permitted to take it right out. We have no protection if I walk under it.
I, I think the best option is probably go up on the berm.
Yeah, I think.
That was, what gonna be my suggestion. Try to get that berm above the eye level from the houses.
Okay, so can you just put that into the?
The conditions, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, our best attempt to get it above that elevation.
Yeah, just think about it. Yeah, just think about it, if you stand over there.
The more we have to slip it out. Right.
Well, can you come on?
We're already on top of most of it, so, we're already on top of most of it, so it shouldn't be bad.
Can you go a little bit on this side, too, to build it up?
Uh, the problem is the right-of-way, we can't approach upon the right-of-way legally.
Oh, I see.
And if we did, there's, now you're talking more trees that are involved, so I'd rather.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not much left there, anyway, so, I went down the other day, and just more trees are down.
No, there's none.
Yeah, there is, oh, yeah, there is.
They're cleaning up, they're falling up.
They're falling down, I mean, I, I can't say that enough, we lost two grape tree trees in our land, and then there's another one that's on the edge of our land. And that one came down, and it's just, it, it's terrible. The earth's changing, you can't, you can't stop the earth doing what it's doing, it's changing, and what's happened here is just, you've taken it, you, you, you increased it to the devastation that's going on.
So I really wish the residents had come a few years ago, when he came over here, and expressed all your concerns. I also wish that what he said on the video, that he will not cut this tree, it's a quarter, I, I revisited, and I found it, minute twenty-two. Says, you know, I'm not gonna cut those trees. But, so, but we have both, you know, you weren't here to, you know, make your concerns.
We did have a concern, and we might not have came to you, but last year in January, we filed an abatement on our taxes. And the abatement was for the condition of what he's done, okay? To our value of our home, and plus the other two residents, so the condition of their home.
And that's fine, but we gotta understand that the planning board, the only thing that the planning board is, the use of land. When they came to ask permission to use the land, that's when we have power to say, no, you cannot do it. Just like this guy's came and did it before, can you use this residential as this? And we say yes or no. So I'm, I'm trying, because, you know, you weren't here to, you know, here.
I think that was probably.
Unfortunately, the trees got cut down, and, you know, it, it.
Us was fighting cancer, so.
I understand, I understand, I understand, but I'm, I'm trying to help you, I'm trying to get his, his business going on, um.
But you took it on his word, that he wasn't gonna cut those trees down, so.
I would just, like, give you a check, we said the board, if I said that, it was outside of the zone, and then outside of the, um, uh, excavation area. The parcel is two separate parcels, cause one's, the only thing that they have here is the pit. However, there was a plan, and it was approved by the state, a cutting plan, and the state approved the cutting of the trees.
Mr. Chairman, like I said before, the, the damage has done.
Yeah.
We're trying, we're trying to, you know, you're trying to get your abatement, and you're trying to get dissipating noise a little bit.
We got, um, denied.
You got denied?
Oh, yeah. So it isn't like we didn't notify somebody in town of what's going on.
When all the letters went out for this project, we missed you.
All right, well, yeah, it just what it is, so.
If you can have, have that berm, so, if we go there and stand, and I don't see your machine, that'll be great.
Yeah.
That, that, you know.
That's, we want that, too.
As physically as possible, I just, from my house, I don't wanna see that machine, how you do it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Once this is all approved, and we figure out, I have one load of trees and stone stuff that have to move from behind her house, and I'm gonna start building the wall myself, cause I got some time to kill before everything happens, so, I'll start that part right away.
Okay.
So I'll see things happening, and hopefully, um, ease their concerns, and when he comes, then he can finish it as he goes. Yeah, we'll grade it off, make it nice, and plant some grass.
Have to see it. I would have to see it. I, I just.
Well, it's a condition that we set up, and.
It'll be done.
They won't get permit if that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I know what the noise does in that area, I can't say that enough.
And, yeah, and this barrier is not gonna be bulletproof, meaning, yeah, you still will hear it, but not as if it wasn't, it's like people talking up here, and we shut the door, you know, you still hear it, but it's not that bothering them, because we're putting a bar, we're trying to put a barrier, a visual barrier, and a acoustic barrier to protect you from, you know, from his business.
And if this does go down, it's gonna help, cause as this is lower.
Once this goes down, as he's digging this section.
It'll get better.
It will get better.
Plus, these, the trees in here will grow, too.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do some digging prior to doing crushing, so we can make an area, we'll be lowering some areas.
Okay.
So that'll actually be lower than what's showing right now.
Correct.
Cause I can't just dump out that gravel, I want to use some of that gravel, make, make a work area.
Okay.
We won't with existing numbers, but.
You know, all your operations and work will be fine, as long as you keep the condition of sight view, you know. If I stand on my deck and I look at it, I can see it from the top.
Yeah.
You know, the, at the, at least, that's the least that we can do for, for the neighbors.
I think you're always gonna see it up on the, up on the way back, but you won't see, you know, the berm's there protected from the parking area, you won't see the equipment there.
Well, I don't care much about the, I care about the noise that you're gonna hear.
Yeah, across the stream, across the bridge, way up on the hill, it's far away.
And what kind of trucks are you hauling and stuff in, I know it's not just dump trucks.
Travel dumps.
Can you go back to your house?
Nothing that you haven't seen in the last two, three years.
You what? I see the dump trucks go out.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is there anything we can do about their abatement?
Uh, that's tax.
That's the assessor's office.
Yes, I mean assessor.
She said she couldn't do anything, it was denied, and we had the denial, she, we did do something, we reached, we, we, we actually reached out last year. We tried to do something, because we pay good taxes, Jim and I do.
Yeah.
Okay? And we have no problem paying the taxes, but to have individuals take your, what you've worked so hard for.
Yeah, yeah.
And degrade it, uh, I'm sorry, it hurts, it hurts me, that isn't how I was brought up, I was brought up to, um, be respectful, be, um, honest, truthful. Uh, take care of what you, what's given to you.
May, maybe if, if, if the, uh, na, uh, voters tell the story to the, um, uh, town administrator?
Could try.
You know, just say, look, this is what happened, from day one to last night meeting, is any?
I think they would have to prove how there was a, a loss in the evaluation of their property, and they would have to substantially show what it was, to be able to decrease it, to, to get a decrease on their property taxes. And, but that's, that's all the assessors, it's not what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah.
That's beyond us.
Right.
I will try anyway.
Try it, Jim.
Do you have doors? Maybe an appraisal, something like that.
I don't even know whether they ever came up to look at it, um, what we are, what we put on the abatement for.
I don't know.
I mean, it's.
They mean that.
I know they've had their, his problems down there as well, keeping people.
Well, they just had a third party go through and appraise all the properties, they did their five-year appraisal of all the properties, and if it was tied in during that time, it would have been appraised at that time of what the value was. So, y- your best bet would be to talk with them, it's a new board, new people.
Explain it, just explain from day one.
Well, we did, we did the first time, but.
Like David is saying, there's new board, new people.
Yeah.
You know.
Take photos, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, you have to, we're just collecting them, so, from the day it started, so. Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, um, anything else?
You just gonna, you're gonna make sure anybody else needs to say anything before we move on, and then you can close it to the public?
Anybody else, or any final comments? No one to do? No. So, oh, okay, so, last meeting, we talked about doing this in like fourteen months? Finishing up Area One, that's okay. And we, I forgot what we said, like, but the date after we approved the special permit, right?
Yeah, it's, you, you, we were talking about a specific timeframe from the date the permit is approved.
Yeah. So I think we said fourteen months from approval, which would sort of include the appeal time and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
So, and then you'd be out of Area One, it'd be all done, right? Okay.
It'd be reclaimed just for parking at that point.
Yeah. Fourteen months. And we're gonna do a six-foot berm? Get a six-foot berm in there for them?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
And, and, hold on, um, we talked about noise level, so we'll have to figure.
There's no reference for the six-foot, could be six-foot down there, could be six-foot down here.
It's line of sight.
The line of sight.
Okay, okay, so six-foot berm, I don't know how we write that, but yeah, line of.
It would be line of sight from.
A berm that blocks the line of sight to the machine, from the house.
All right. Dust mitigation.
And that would probably, y- you'd probably say line of sight from ground level.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, if somebody gets on a ladder on the deck, the line of sight changes.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's not.
But if you, if you do line of sight from ground level.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's too low. Standing, and.
Well, yeah. No, 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 if you stand on ground level.
Yes, your line of sight.
Yeah.
Like five-eight, it's the, you know, a common eye, eyesight.
Of an average person.
Okay, so noise level, we'll have to figure that, um, we'll just put in there no hazardous materials, we'll put in dust control. Is there anything else?
No, I just wanna make sure that there's no hazardous materials being brought to the site.
Yeah.
Um, that that's, we don't allow that, it's not authorized.
Yeah.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation. What do we wanna do?
Standard would be like seven AM to six PM. Or is it too early?
Do we have anything?
What time you guys usually start?
We like to start at seven, and no later than five, Monday through Friday, occasional Saturday, we might do a Saturday once a, once a, a blue moon, once you can.
Yeah, we don't allow Sundays, no Sundays, no sol, Sundays, no holidays.
Can we limit the rock crushing to a little more restrictive, can you do, you know, instead of seven AM for rock crushing, could you?
The guys start at six, so they'll buy, if they, if we're doing it during a travel from six, get here for seven, and, and go. We'd like to keep seven o'clock. It's typically construction hours.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't you ask the, uh, voters?
Any?
At the eights of each other time. Seven is way too.
I think in the beginning, they aren't gonna do seven days, I mean, um, every day. If I remember right.
Yeah, we're not crushing all the time, I mean, I have two pits, we crush six to eight weeks a year.
We won't be crushing at seven.
No, we typically start at seven, only six to eight weeks a year for crushing.
But she's saying that's too early.
But this, you know, we're screening dirt, we have to get that dirt out, that's a seven o'clock start, too.
Well.
That's up to the board.
Where do the other pits in town start, do they start at seven?
Have to go back and check, I don't.
Hours of operation.
They all have a rock crush?
Their current hours of operation are from seven AM to five PM. It's Saturday from eight AM to four PM, no Sundays and holidays, they're prohibited. That's the current permit.
The current permit or the bylaw?
That is what they currently have in the, the approval of conditions. Their current conditions. It is page twenty-four. Eight point six point four.
Yeah, that's the bylaw then, right? As opposed to their. Yeah, okay. But it may take place.
Yeah.
Well, if this other stuff is working, then then it should be okay, and if we're putting a noise level on there, then. Yeah. So, dust mitigation, noise level, construction of the berm at some height, yearly inspection by the building commissioner, hours of operation, hazardous materials, and a timeline, right? Yeah, for Area One.
Right.
Fourteen months from the.
Right.
Approval.
The approval, and then they're out of Area One.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
What about the entrance?
I don't know what.
To keep it as, um, so you drive by, you can't tell what's in there.
So just clean, right? Yeah, we can.
Should be cleaned and allowed to return back to natural vegetation.
Yeah, as much as possible, right? Okay.
There you go.
I mean, we can come up with, but this is a good base, and I can work on this.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, cool. Sure.
How many other places in Moore and House the operation that he's gonna be running, the rock crushing?
I.
They're the only one.
They're the only.
Well, no, no, um, Dave Callahan has rock crushing.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Jim Fountain definitely has a screener, but I don't.
He has a screener, but I don't have to get a crusher.
Okay.
But Dave has.
Yeah.
But he has a big one, and he's up on top of the hill.
Yeah.
Nobody hears that.
No, no, that's way off in the ways.
Yeah, he crushes granite.
Yeah.
And these, ours are portable crushers, so they're much smaller than what he has.
This is huge.
Yeah.
And, yeah, he crushes granite to, for, um, sized stone, so.
All right, so, and if there's not anything else, does someone wanna make a motion to close the hearing? So, I'll explain, we, we have to close, and then we have to vote. The problem is, once we vote, we only have fourteen days to get the decision through Laura into the clerk. So what we always do is we close, work on.
The wording.
The decision, the conditions, and then the next meeting, hopefully.
Take the vote.
We will take a vote, and then we're kinda done, and then the fourteen days is just procedural, we're not, we're gonna get something done, so.
So it's two weeks from now?
Yeah, and then there'll be a, so that, at that point, we'll have fourteen days to get everything to the clerk to get stamped and finalize, and then there's a twenty-day, right? Twenty-day appeal period, or twenty-one day.
Twenty-day appeal period.
Twenty-day appeal period.
So on the twenty-first day it ends.
Yeah, okay. So, anybody can appeal it, uh, or you could appeal it, um, and then after that, it's done, it's all set. So at this point, you know, you're looking at April, the middle of May, probably, realistically. Assuming there's no appeal. Assuming there's no appeals.
Just one question, it won't go outside of the scope of what we discussed tonight, right? It'll just be fine tuning those things?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything we vote on, we have to discuss in public.
Right.
And then, once we close it, there's no more public input.
Okay.
So we can't get any more input from anybody else, we can't ask you for anything else.
Okay.
It's, it's, that's it, we're done.
Okay.
We just come to the decision of what it's gonna actually say. But if you don't like what it says, you have an appeal period.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do a make motion to close the public hearing for the earth, well, for the, um, special permit number three fifteen for seven twenty-seven Brimfield Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Diddy, Betty's aye.
David Dufrain aye.
Ed Longdon aye.
Ricky aye.
Richi Hacker aye, all right, the hearing, public hearing is closed, so we can't take any more input, and then Ed and I will work on conditions.
Yeah, the decision.
Decision, and then we'll reconvene next meeting, which is gonna be what?
Uh, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you guys.
Ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, moving on, we have meeting minutes from March twenty-fourth. Can I have a, a motion to approve the minutes?
Some.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Diddy, Betty's aye.
I can't vote.
David Dufrain aye.
Richi Hacker aye. Ed was not at that meeting.
Yep.
Uh, motion passes. All right, bills and payroll.
We're gonna be good.
We have a payment for OTO in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and twenty-six cents. Is that?
Got the backup here?
That covers it, right, that's the total?
That's the total for all the invoices we've received, and we also did receive the, sort of the refunding the account, uh, payment from Agilis to cover these invoices, and in total.
All right, and then we have expenses for petty cash of forty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
And that's mainly for certified mailing for special permit stuff.
All right, and then payroll for six hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. So can I have a motion to approve all that?
I make a motion to approve all the bills and payroll.
All right, as we read them.
As read.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Diddy, Betty's aye.
David Dufrain aye.
Ed Longdon aye.
Ricky aye.
Richi Hacker aye, any new business? Anything, any old business?
Well, the, the only, and I know this was covered last week, but NextGen, there was a complaint against NextGen filed by the butter.
Oh, yeah.
And there was a, a letter sent by the building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, two of them as a warning, saying, here is what was, um, complained about, and kind of, we're watching it, we have any other ones, we'll take action.
Okay, good job, all right. And the butter is okay, we're happy with that?
So, so.
He did, um, he did follow up with me and said, you know, basically glad it was addressed, you know, if he, you know, continues to have issues, he will, you know, basically follow up.
Okay.
But he was, yeah, per his telling, satisfied in the meantime, so.
Excellent.
I'll take him at his word for that.
Yeah, yeah, all right, any other, uh, old business? Solar letters, anything, still working on it?
Still working on them, now, once I get my petty cash, uh, reimbursement, I can send some very nice certified, certified letters to some of these.
How many you think are outstanding?
I think we're down to like three.
Okay.
Could be, like, could be worse, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But you have gotten responses from at least several, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Comments and concerns?
FYI, um, the building inspector contacted me because it looks like the town administrator had a meeting with a company for software to do the, uh, permits in town. Building inspector didn't want to have an opinion on it, so he asked me to participate on the meeting in behalf of him. Jim and I went through the meeting and looked at the software, um, no conclusions yet, but we looked at it. And I haven't talked to Jim about, you know, um, any conclusions for that specific software.
Which company was it? Was it Permitize or?
It wasn't Permitize, it was, it was.
So a new one?
A new one, but what I think has striked Jim was that when we asked them where, where were they to check reference, they didn't have many, any other towns in Massachusetts.
So they knew.
They're kind of new, but it sounded to me that they weren't.
Sounds like they need to make a deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so we'll be, can you pick?
Well, there's a problem with that, because a lot of mistakes get made when you're experimenting.
Right.
We can't afford that.
Well.
That costs us lawsuits.
But i- unless they're well-established elsewhere, you know?
Right, and that's why we need to have somebody that has, they know the laws in the state, and they factor that in.
So it's cloud permit software.
Okay.
Okay.
I wasn't very impressed either, so.
All right.
Okay, all right, yeah. I'm the only, oh, I'm sorry.
When we asked them, how does it talk to, um.
Vader?
Vader, they said they just make an Excel file.
Oh, okay.
So that wasn't much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's what a few of the other ones do, is they just share, share the Excel file, and you have to cross-reference anyways. That was the problem with Vader's, because Vader really didn't talk with anything else, it doesn't talk with permit eyes or anything.
Yeah, yeah, they don't, they keep it closed.
We had that other one that we were looking at, that did talk, but it wasn't really what they wanted financially. So they've opted to go more financial versus permit, so.
Do, do you know, did, uh, Sturbridge have a permit software or?
They have, well, at least they had, a Stella, which they use for permitting. It was not well-liked.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, in my personal experience, I haven't found something that really.
They all have.
Friendly user.
A drawback.
Or efficient, not even Boston, where I submit everything online, and two months later, I still have to talk to the guy to check my files.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no all-out municipal software that's gonna talk to everybody and do everything we want. Across the board, because the finance department is very specific, permitting is a s- specific, town clerk is specific.
Yeah.
And, you know, it just.
There's nothing comprehensive.
They, there's stuff that will talk with each other.
Yeah.
But, again, we, we've already gone with Vader, and Vader, they would have to do links and get with Vader, and get permission, and get special sub, like links to do, and i- it's like a patch into the system.
Ching, 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 everything.
Yeah, it's like, and it probably wouldn't work all that well, so the only real thing that e- seems like everybody does is they do an Excel spreadsheet. And they have, the assessors, if there's an issue, then they address the issue, if there's something on the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So.
I would like to ask the secretary of the building department, what would she do?
Yeah.
Cause she's the one who made user number one.
It's true.
I am sort of of the feeling that it's, eh, in my experience and, you know, observing other places, it creates a lot of duplicate work, because you have to put it in the system that talks to some things, but then you also have to put it in another place where it talks to other things, you know, so it's like you're putting it in the system because everything's going through the permitting system, but if someone mails in a hard copy, then I have to sit with the hard copy, type it all into the system, but then I still have the hard copy, and I still have to do stuff with the hard copy, so I'm still, I still, it's basically extra work in a lot of places, and I.
We, we're still lucky that there's very little permits.
Yeah.
Small amount of permits. So there's still time to have somebody develop a better software.
And that's the thing too, is, is in, I mean, this is back, you know, for, eh, when I worked, was working as a school district, it was, uh, the, the main database system for the school system was Aspen, that was what every teacher, every administrator used, was Aspen. And it talked to everything, but it did not have any special ed stuff in it, so the Aspen company created a little special education patch in that didn't talk to any of the rest of Aspen, so you would have to go into regular Aspen, copy all your stuff, put it on like a Word document, then like log out of that Aspen, log into the special ed Aspen, and then like import all the stuff that you copied somewhere because it didn't run good reports.
No.
So it's, I think that just sort of illustrate, uh, uh, it's, you know, that's a very specific example of a very common kind of.
Yeah.
Issue.
Sounds like paper is always best.
Yeah.
And also, this, the, working in, you know, education, this state wouldn't look at anything on a computer, had to have hard copy files for everything anyway.
We put men on the moon, there's always a better way, always, and the only other thing is the, um, bylaw stuff, we're talking about CMRC again next week on what, accessory dwell- dwelling units.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we're working on first.
Yeah.
ADUs.
And short-term rental.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, do you, speaking of something else, do you think we could have a short pre-meeting with the, um, CMRC and the architects who are doing the study for the, um, common?
What do you wanna do, have?
Have it, a meeting.
You wanna invite him to a meeting?
What I'm trying to say is that, the way like, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I've seen the plans, I've seen everything, and I wanted to give you a little bit more feedback of what's really going on, because to me, it looks more like it's turning into a landscape planner.
Oh, okay.
Which is not what we want, we want a document that justifies what to do, or how to get things from that study. So instead of going into the next third public meeting and, you know, dropping a cold bucket of water and say, look, this is what we're looking for, you know?
So invite them to one of our meetings?
Even if it's online, you know, to give us an update, how is it going, because I'm afraid it's going into that direction of, oh, here's your, your landscape plan, and that, that's not gonna do much to the project, because the project has to talk to the, all the things that could go on, and, you know, justify this, justify that, or just like the, these, the other studies that we've done, for example, the, um, the thing that we have on Tuesday about the new building for the fire and the police, it justifies, well, because we don't have a building for that, you know, we need this, we need that, but the, the common is just turning into a landscape plan, not, it's not resolving parking, it's not resolving other properties around, it's not resolving really the activities, um, so.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to help to, we're paying for it, and we wanna get.
Yeah.
Something that we can say, oh, this justifies that we need to acquire that piece of land, because without it, you know, this, that, we need.
All right.
We need a, we don't need a plan, a landscape, our plan to, just to, you know, make some, you know, walkways and put it here and there. It is a study of what's going on on the common, so, um, okay. And maybe there's more that we don't know, because we missed the first couple of meetings, that's why I want them to, you know, feed us a little bit, what, how is it going, before it just turns into a landscape plan.
Yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll email John O'Leary.
Because what I saw the other day was a, a building, a sample of a building with bathrooms and storage.
Yeah.
The, the study has to say, we need this.
Okay.
You see where I'm trying to go, it, it, it.
Okay.
You know, does it solve the parking problem, does it solve the, you know, the activities that we do in town?
Right, yeah.
Do they have the, I think, I think they need to look up outside the box a little bit.
Yeah.
Instead of just concentrating on the property line and just, oh, this is what we want.
Right, yeah, I agree, yeah, from what I've seen.
Cause right now, if you look at it, two or three parking lots are, are, you know, out of code, the existing parking lots, they don't have the right dimensions.
Okay.
Does, does the study mentions that, we don't know.
Yeah.
I've been looking for it. I just want a tool to help us, you know, be, get something out of it.
Yeah.
But if it's just something that they're gonna have, give us within the property lines, and it's not solving the parking, it's not solving the kids after school, it's not solving the, the bathrooms and all the other activities.
Yeah.
It's hard to, it's hard to, you know, justify that.
Right, okay, okay, all right, I will contact him. Any other comments? We're gonna, our next meeting is April twenty-eighth, it's seven fifteen, if there's nothing else.
I make a motion to adjourn?
A second.
All in favor?
Diddy, Betty's aye.
David Dufrain aye.
Ed Longdon aye.
Ricky aye.
Richi Hacker aye, we are adjourned.